I am ready.
Of the United States of America. To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, amendment and approval of the agenda.
With approval?
I have no proposed amendments.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
So a motion and a second, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Everyone's in favor, so now public comments. See any public comments unless you have one or do you have a public comment? Okay, very good. Uh, no public comments, all right, up for discussion is review, finance department progress.
Do we have a representative from the finance department here?
No.
Yes, we do, Julie Swift.
Feel like you're gonna sing a song.
This is like Wheel of Fortune.
I am, I am. I'm not gonna do a duet, yeah.
That'll be special.
It'll probably be pretty good.
Um, good afternoon, so an update on the bank recs, I am in January on the treasurer's accounts, the two pool accounts are balanced. I'm waiting for some information from the tax office on the unseg account, I'm getting ready to start on the treasurer's account, I know, um, the treasurer and the new deputy treasurer have been working on getting some of the things, uh, done to help with my reconciliation, some of the back issues that have been outstanding. Um, the rest of the accounts, the sheriff's office accounts are done, uh, through, April, I believe, and then the AP and payroll, the deputy treasurer was just doing the sweeps from the treasures to those accounts, so I can get back to March on those, but those go pretty fast. So once I have, when I have the time to do them, they go pretty quick, and so like I said, we are in January.
So.
This is for the twenty-two, twenty-three?
Yes.
This year?
Yes.
So we still don't have any ending balances?
Not yet, not yet.
So in June, we were at June of the previous year, right?
Uh, I think it was in August.
Okay, August, we were in June, that's where we.
No, in, in June, we were in August of last year.
June, we're in August of last year, okay.
Right, so I've made.
So now we're in, now we're in January of the next year.
Yes.
So I feel like, at this rate, when you're, when you're talking about the accounts, have, are we still basically at the same level of everything being unreconciled, or have we made progress in more than one area?
Well, we've definitely made progress, so as far as, as far as some of the past reconciliation items that needed to be, uh, cleared up, a lot is that, a lot of that has happened in the last, well, in December, we got a lot of that done, for the December bank rec. Um, and like I said, the treasurer's working on some other items that have been outstanding for the January one. No, you know, I take it back, we were in, we were not done with June last year when we met.
Oh, God.
Yeah.
I thought we were in May and then.
Yeah.
We had finished the previous year, twenty-one, twenty-two.
Right, right, those are, those are done, we are now in twenty-two, twenty-three.
But I still feel like, at this rate, unless we do something different, we're not gonna be fully caught up until like twenty-twenty-five.
Uh, I don't think so, I don't think so, I mean, when I, when I'm doing them, I mean, I can get, I can get, you know, a full month done within a matter of a week.
So what's keeping you from doing it?
Time that I have to do other things.
Okay.
Um, you know, unfortunately, uh, I lost my backup in the finance department, so somebody that was going to be learning to do payroll, left in July, our finance director left in September, so we are down to one and a half people in the department. So, if I, if I had somebody to do payroll, and I didn't have to do that every, you know, semi-monthly, that would help, but I don't have that luxury, so every spare moment I have.
You probably will, because we're having the ACOG people coming.
Which would be great, which would be fantastic.
So then, what I would propose is that, is that, when we have the, ACOG is, is.
ElCOG.
Or, Lane Council of Governments, they have agreed to come down because, and, and work with our finance department, see what kind of, what kind of, they, they actually provide services like that for other governmental entities around, in, in the Lane County area mostly, but elsewhere as well, so cities, counties, um, lots of different groups, and they're going to be here next, Revia, do we know the day?
Wednesday, Thursday?
Next Wednesday, Thursday.
So they, they may not know that Frank resigned. So, um, he's, he's gone, so we're gonna be outsourcing that position with the Lane County Council of Governments, which is what we're talking about. We established a relationship with them through the IT disaster that we had, and they're providing, um, the specialized services that we need in the IT department, and, and Phil is working for us, but kind of under their, their umbrella. So that model works really well, and we're looking at doing that with the finance department as well, so that's.
And how, how will that impact the budget for the finance department, because, um, I mean, ElCOG charges a pretty good amount for services, so how does that impact?
Well, you know, they do charge, but I'll tell you one thing that, that might be different, is we actually would get something for the money that we pay. So, it's hard, it's hard for me to give you, it's not really an apples to apples. When, looking at the, at the, at the, um, field of devastation that was existing when you joined the budget committee and I showed up here, I feel like, I feel like we're just gonna have to proceed forward and, and see how that develops, 'cause, 'cause having a person in a position of, of authority and responsibility who's incompetent, um, is less than, you might as well just throw the money out the window, and so we're not in that position anymore. We're, we're looking at a new field, but I think, you know, we'll have to be cognizant of that as we go forward, but, but I really think that, that as, as far as I'm concerned, I'm not that concerned about the cost at this point, 'cause I wanna get, I wanna get our, our county where, where I can recommend that we, you know, I can, I can know that we're, we're, we're actually telling the truth about, about our finances.
Well, what's nice is this person from ElCOG is like a super user on Cassell, which is our accounting package, she apparently is off the charts, so that'll be a huge help.
And, and also, as, as, so as we look at all this, uh, we're, we talked to her last week about looking at some of our, we, we have a lot of different other systems, like for example, we have, uh, Gulf Pilot that we do, that's twenty thousand dollars a year, right there, to keep that thing going. Well, Cassell can do, Cassell can provide a lot of those same services, and she's, she's, we're, we're asking her to look at us, so hopefully it's all gonna end up being a, being a net, uh, uh, net savings, and even, even if it wasn't, we would, at, we would, my goal is that, at the end of all this, is that we're all gonna be looking at the same program, instead of having these kind of isolated principalities where, where I don't know what's going on over here, and they might tell me, and I have to ask. We should be able to, Julie should be able to look over and see what's going on in the road department whenever she wants, boom, and, uh, vice versa. So, that's where I wanna.
Uh, not being familiar with this, uh, ElCOG group, I don't know if that's an acronym or what they are, but are they basically a consulting firm for the government, or are they like boots on the ground, like, give you bodies to help you work?
They're boots, they're boots on the ground.
Okay.
They're, and they, they provide services around, they, they were a thing that was developed among those local governments up there, to facilitate efficiencies between, you know, like, for example, for example, right, you know, here we are, we've got a whole bunch of different, we've got, you know, we've got the clerk's office that has unique responsibilities, we've got the assessor's office completely different, well, does every county need to have a, an expert at the same level for, or can we use that, you know, the, the election stuff only comes around once a year? We, do we need to keep that staffed up at that level all year, or can we bring in a person to, to keep everything up to date, make sure everybody's trained, all the rest of the staff is trained? That's, that's why they developed, it's a, you know, it was, it was developed to make things more efficient, so.
A bit of both, a bit of a consultant and outsourcing.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of outsourcing, so, so a lot of the smaller municipalities that they don't have the money, or they don't have the expertise, or the, you know, the specialists that they need, they can outsource it through them.
And they've also been doing our GIS platform for years.
Yeah.
So when we, when we, we used to have it in-house, and when that person left, ElCOG took it over, and so they've been doing our GIS for years.
So, go ahead, you want to.
I'll, I'll just close it, yeah, it all makes sense, I mean, you want software suite for the whole county, that's good.
I think that's gonna be a big, I mean, that's gonna be, I can't imagine we're not gonna end up saving money on that, 'cause we have, we have duplication and repetition in, in so many areas that we just.
So, so there'll be some cost savings associated with shutting down some of those other unnecessary programs because of the relationship that we have with them, and then we also have some salary-related costs that we'll save, so it'll kind of, well, we're, we're not sure exactly how that's gonna balance out, but it should, you know, there is some cost savings with doing it too.
Sounds like it, and so is the hope that using ElCOG and, um, outsourcing that to replace both the finance director and the senior accounting position, or are you still hoping?
I, I, I'm gonna wait and get direction from our, the ElCOG people, see what they, what they're comfortable provo- providing, and, and how that works best for everybody. Um, kinda get a, we'll just see what, 'cause you know, we, when we were doing this with the, with the IT, um, stuff, you know, we have people coming and going, and, and during the emergency period of that, that made sense, and then we were thinking, you know, we're still in, in the, in the function of, of figuring out how, when we need people on site, how do those people come down, where we keep, where we put them, how long it comes, but it's, I, I'm just telling you, everybody's pretty easy to work with, and, um, and pretty, you know, and, and motivated to, to have a successful outcome, which is a pleasant new approach.
The, the one thing that is really clear is the higher level of expertise.
And so is that, is the hope then also that by having them come in and oversee our finance department, that we will have not only the, the cost savings or cost efficiencies, but we will also have time efficiencies?
Right.
So, um, and, and of course, you don't know, so all I can do is wait and see, or we can wait and see, but, uh, it's possible then that we could start this budget year by being caught up to even the current.
We have, we have to, we have to do that.
I, I was gonna say that, you know, my, my goal, my, my recommendation to, to the commission is that, as far as our time window for getting completely caught up, um, I'd like to make it within, you know, thirty to sixty days, I'd like to, if, if we can get this, if we can get people to, to provide support for what Julie's doing, I'd like Julie to be able to, it needs to be the top priority so we can get this done.
Well, and, and we need to address that, because the second thing on the agenda under discussion action items is department budget revisions. So, I've been talking with department heads, and how can they do a department revision when they don't know how much money they have?
If they don't know what they started with, and they don't know what they're ended with.
They don't. And so, we, we have to, we have to end this, this has to stop, and it has to change, and we do need a firm line in the sand, um, because department heads can't do their work, and, and we, we need to, we need to get some clarity in that, so. I, I was, honestly, I was expecting that we would have that today, um, but it sounds like we're still quite a ways away, so. I, I guess the best we can do today is draw that line in the sand, and then have some accountability associated with it, Ted.
I think we were all hoping that that was what we were going to be doing today.
Well, I would say that I, I, I was hoping that too, but, but I've been, as we've been going forward, I've been seeing that, that, you know, the, there's, it's only been moving forward as it can, so that's why I'm recommending that we, that we do take alternative action, and we, and we recommit, you know, I, I, we recommit Julie full-time, I know that Nick, Nick, our new, uh, deputy treasurer, has been providing a lot of, of.
Not you, the other.
Not you. The other Nick.
New job for you, Nick.
The Nick in the, Nick in the front of the room, Nick in the back of the room.
But, but anyway, Nick has, Nick has been helping us get a lot of, a lot of the other stuff, the turnovers and, and so forth that are outstanding issues, and Nick is learning. He's just basically brand-new on the job, but he's, uh, he, I, we have, we have a lot of faith in him, he's, he's shown to be a great producer so far, and I'm sure he'll be happy to work with, with all of us so that we can, you know, he understands that this is a top priority, we, when we had the interview with him, he, he was, we didn't, we didn't, you know, hide it from him.
There was no sugar cutting.
There was none, anyway, so I think, I think that's the way that, I think it's our best bet, is that we go forward, and, and, and next Wednesday, we, we, um, we just put together a game plan with ElCOG and, and make this the priority, that, 'cause otherwise, I mean, we really have to be able to, I wanna be able to start the, the actual budget year next year like normal humans, and that's, and it, and.
Real numbers.
Right, real numbers, no, no.
And a balanced budget.
Right.
So Julie, can this be done in thirty days?
Depends what kind of, uh, help we get from ElCOG.
Julie's, if you're, if you were able to work on it full-time, you said you can, you can really knock out a lot a week, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, and, um, one question I have, so, so Dave has been providing you the information that you need, are, Nick, are you, are you getting familiar with where he goes to access that?
Yeah.
So in case something happens to Dave, we can, we can work around that as well, okay?
Yeah, Julie's helped me out, Julie's helped me out a lot.
Okay, so then, I mean, I feel, I feel confident, because if you recall, last time, Dave was having health problems, and we was kind of unclear about how things were going forward, so I feel like we've got a better, we've got, we've got a much better, uh, bench.
Yeah, Nick has really stepped in and, and got a lot done in a short period, short period of time, so I think that there's a, there's light at the end of the tunnel.
As we get this straightened out, we're gonna have him run animal control. On top of everything.
So Jay or John, questions, comments?
I have a comment, Jay, I'll, I'll go before you if that. I just want everybody to know that Frank Jerome did exactly what he was hired to do, we knew he wasn't competent in county government, but we were struggling to, now, to find somebody, we didn't have El, we didn't have Lane to lean on like we do now. Um, so I just wanna make that perfectly clear, he, he stepped in, he didn't have to, and, uh, you know, my hat's off to him, I, I appreciate what he did, I heard the word incompetent, made my skin crawl, but, um, that's, that's what I got to say.
We also knew he wasn't gonna be a long-term employee, he kind of helped in just to, he stepped in to help out, and that was his goal. There was just more, more to it and more needed than what he was willing to provide or able to provide.
And I, I don't know if everybody else knows, but Elizabeth also left before Frank.
Yeah, she left July.
Yeah.
Jay, comments?
No, I don't have anything to add.
I'm gonna say this, while I'm here, I, I'm, I'm gonna be taking part in every, every employment interview, because I specifically do not agree that you should take a person who's not qualified for the position because they want to help. We needed, we needed, what we have here right now is a demonstration of how not to run an organization, so you do not hire the wrong person, if you can't find that person, you don't fill the position, that's my position, that's where I stand.
Just so all, you know, I've been, I've been participating in whatever interviews are upcoming, um, I know we have some anticipated interviews in the planning department coming up, um, and I'll be participating in those, I was on Nick's interview as well, and, uh, and it's important, my position is as important not to settle, uh, for just whoever puts in, if we, if we don't have, uh, a viable candidate, then we need to search harder and work harder to fill those, so. Those interviews are important, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue to do that, um, as long as we have open positions. Okay, so, uh, that being said, moving forward now, um, how do we move forward, what are, what are the recommendations to move forward now?
We're kind of still in a waiting game right now, I mean, we're still standing right on that cliff, and we're still, but we have to have ending numbers and beginning numbers before we can even make a plan, so, uh, we can't expect department heads to move forward with an adequate budget unless they have real numbers to deal with.
No, we can't, and they're pretty frustrated too, Val, um, they made that really important, and I, and I get it, I, I get their frustration. Um, and, and that's why this has to be a priority moving forward, so.
So, here, I actually do have comments.
Go ahead, Jay.
So, we, I think made it very clear that this was a priority when we were building, when we were going through the budget process before.
Oh, wait, wait, so since you just said that, does everybody agree that that was made a priority with the previous, everybody, so I'm getting unanimous nods, just so you know, Jay.
Yeah, well, I mean, we set this budget hearing up with the anticipation that we would have a reconciled budget, that we would be able to do supplemental work, knowing what the numbers are, and, I mean, you want, I mean, talk about vital, we're going into a situation where we could potentially be asking the voters for a levy or some kind of funding source, um, we're going into budget season really soon, which means we'll still be, um, outside of our scope, uh, you know, anticipating, anticipating, we won't have much time to prepare if we are, and these numbers coming in, coming up, are, I mean, our job is to, our, 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 our primary purpose is to budget the money accordingly to what we have for the best purpose for our citizens and the priorities, and if we don't know what that number is, we can't do that job. Period, I don't have any, I mean, I don't know how else this can be said.
I don't either.
Yeah.
Well, I will, I will just say that we will be proceeding on with, with what the plan we discussed today, we'll make it our top priority, my staff, my staff is spending a fair amount of its time addressing the unfulfilled responsibilities from the, from the finance department that, that we've inherited, even though we're not finance experts, but we're making through, we're working through that and, and doing the best we, we can, so, uh, it's a, I can only imagine that that is, um, probably reflected throughout most of the other departments to some degree or another, so it's a, it's a big, there's a big load on, on everybody, and that's why looking for outside help and really calling in the cavalry at this point is, and, and also, um, being honest and, and, um, being straightforward about, about the situation that we got ourselves in and are currently in, so that's, that's what I feel like I wanted to communicate to you guys today, and I think, I, I think I've done that.
Yeah, and Ted, I wanna, I wanna say, I, I also agree with your, the, the idea that, oh, is John talking?
No, go ahead, Jay.
I wanna, the, you know, we, not to settle, right, and, you know, part of the issue, I think, that we're gonna end up, I mean, we have a lot of obstacles in terms of bringing, uh, and recruiting, um, high-level talent, right, we, we have just logistics, housing, et cetera, uh, but what we can control is culture, right, we can create a culture that, that, that people want to be a part of, and that's the, the secondary, uh, you know, we have to do budget, but we also have to build culture. And I agree with your statement, and creative solution in trying to figure out this finance situation, um, when, when, you know, um, I, I, I listened to what John had to say about Frank, but Frank also left almost zero warning, um, for us to be able to recruit in a situation like that, and, um, and, and so, you know, being under the gun, being in this situation, um, I agree that this is a good route out, um, but I, I, I also feel like, we also need to look at some fairly hard timelines, um, you know, uh, of, 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 of going into this budget season.
So, uh, regarding those timelines, um, I'm just looking at a calendar right now, um, I do not want this going into next year, so.
Sixty days from now is December sixteenth, something like that, I'm no mathematician, but I'm getting a lot better at it. I think, I think we need to have it resolved by then, and I, I mean, and, and in the meantime, we can, we can ask our, our departments to provide us with, with their preliminary, you know, what, where, where they are, they think, to date, and I think a lot of them, from what I understand on the, the reports that I've been getting from other departments, um, the treasurer's department, as far as, as far as, um, turnovers and so forth, they, that's really been getting addressed in a much, in a timely fashion, and so I, I, I have, I've got a lot of good feelings about that going forward, I think, I think that we can, we can expect some, to have something to work with at least, maybe we should shoot to start that process beginning of December.
So what is that, uh, the second week of December, what does it look like for all of you, that would be the, uh, week of the eleventh?
Well, I mean, just take Brad, um, well, one thing that Julie had mentioned is, if, if it takes her about one week to do one month, right, if she had a, if she, if she's not interrupted, right, and so, I, 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 we have to, we don't know for certain that ElCOG's gonna be able to assist with this, do we get Ted?
We, we don't, we don't know yet how that looks.
So, um, I mean, do we, do we bring in somebody who's experienced to, who knows our system to assist Julie in getting it done?
Well, I think we try the ElCOG route first, and if that's not an option, then we do bring somebody in.
And, and so who would that be, that be previous, uh, would we try to recruit the previous treasurer, what, what do you think?
I don't know, we gotta solve that problem before ElCOG gets here, so we know what Plan B is.
Okay.
So you'd be looking at December thirteenth, which is a Wednesday? I mean, I guess it doesn't have to be a Wednesday, it could be a Thursday, too, right?
Yeah, it can be, it can be any day of the week, Val, whatever week's better for you.
That, I, I'm supposed to be in Fiji.
That week?
Yeah.
Me too.
Can we, can we, can we just meet there?
Yeah, I mean, we could have a meeting there if we wanted, uh, I mean, I could call in.
Wanna do it the week before?
You can call in, call in, it's fine.
Is it, okay, cool. Taking the sat phone?
Yeah.
Nice.
The fourteenth is a better day for me, which is Thursday, either that or the eleventh, the eleventh or the fourteenth.
I'll go both those days.
I'm supposed to leave the seventh, so I could make any of those days work from a phone call.
Okay, um, let's do Thursday, the fourteenth.
And we've got a BOC DCO meeting at one o'clock, do you wanna do this at eleven?
On the fourteenth, we do.
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
Of December?
Yeah. What was that?
Eleven works, eleven is great.
I think eleven will work, is, will eleven work for everybody, I mean, I don't, I don't really care about the Fiji guy.
That is, uh, tomorrow at, uh, five hours before us, so it's, it'll be early, but I'll give you that.
Be six AM.
No, before I go surfing, so.
Okay.
We're not really feeling for you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Keep trying, yeah.
So, uh, Thursday, the fourteenth at eleven AM?
Sounds good, we will keep you notified for, of developments as we go forward.
So, I have another question, um, it seems that, uh, you were gonna do some investigating on a levy, is that still in progress?
Still in progress, yeah, yeah, we've, we've been in communication with the, uh, firm that we hired, and, um, yeah, that's still in progress, still assessing, uh, their information, and then we should get some type of a full report back from them, and then we'll have a pretty good idea of how we move forward.
Is there a deadline on that?
Do you know, Ted?
I don't.
Jay, do you know?
They've, they're, we, we provided them with some information, I'm not sure when, when they're getting back to us, but.
Yeah, I know that, Revia?
They need some information on our distribution of, uh, funds to the sheriff's office and other departments before they can move forward, I think there's a couple things they are working on, but they're, they, they need quite a few months.
So we'll go, go slow on that. So we're gonna go slow on that.
Yeah, imagine, imagine that surprise. Um, yeah, uh, that's, it's the Nelson Consulting Group. I know that Jay's been talking, uh, directly to them as well as Ted, so. But yeah, that, that is definitely, definitely in progress.
They were planning to send us a, 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 a first draft on the questions, I think, uh, this next week. Last time we met, I think that was their, their plan and that we were gonna try to dial them in.
Yep.
Now they would be doing the research to figure out the valuation of the levy or what's needed to-
Uh, what the community's, uh, input is regarding it, um, as well as what those numbers look like. And then, um, assessing where the community sits on that.
And I have one more question.
Sure.
The ransomware, uh, recovery, um, is that in line still with the numbers that we were initially proposing in the budget?
So, um, we are getting, we still get bills in regularly throughout the week. I know it's over a million dollars that we spent now and we're anticipating that other two million will be on incoming bills. But I don't expect it to exceed that.
And, and we're having, it's just, you know, as we go forward, like with our backups and so forth every day, because we're operating at a, at a more secure level, that creates more complications for making everything work. So it's just, it's just like buying a new car these days, you know, you're like, great.
Well, October is cybersecurity month, so.
It is nice having Phil here though and having immediate access to any, any questions related to it. And there's still bumps in the road that we have going forward. We had an issue with, uh, with a server yesterday and-
With the back, and the batteries, the backup batteries.
Backup batteries and, I mean, there's, there's, we're, we're gonna encounter that for probably the next year. Um, but there's no surprises ahead with-
And we also, I think we've got some pretty good, you know, we've got, we've, we've got some really good relationships with people with our support people, not just ElCOG, but also with, you know, with our, our firewall people. They've, they've, you know, gotten the idea that we're actually serious and we wanna, you know, we kinda need to be in business and they're, and they stepped up. Like the thing we had yesterday, they're bringing their best, their best, um, Cisco person forward to, to deal with. No, they actually, I'm sorry, that, that was what they were planning on doing and then, and then they got the problem solved.
Yeah, Phil got it, Phil got it fixed before that.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll conclude this meeting with, uh, uh, scheduling of our next meeting Thursday, the fourteenth at eleven AM. And you'll call in and then we'll reconvene on, on that day. Any other discussion, Jay or John? All right. A- anybody else?
No, I, I just wanna say, uh, to the budget committee there that thank you for coming in, apologize that, uh, we're not able to be discussing our supplemental, um, needs right now, cause there are some. And, uh, we will, I guess, do the best we can to get this moved forward.
Yep, we will. All right. Thank you, everybody. We'll, we'll conclude this meeting.